The principle of the routine justice for all.
Did you hear, we've had a chance to put over operating statements and minutes for last month?
I'll make a motion to approve the operating statements, September 23rd, 2019 council meeting minutes, September 23rd, 2019, closed session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for September 2019.
I'll second it.
If we have a motion and a second or any questions, hearing on all those pay rise.
Aye.
No. Motion carried.
Okay, we're getting ready for the mayor's report this past month, well, two weeks ago, yesterday. We had the fall conference that was in Cambridge, and I was there, Ellen was there. It was a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday conference, was a very good conference this year. The largest fall conference they ever had, so we're getting more and more people to come to the fall conference because of places that are being offered. At that conference, we also learned that their, next year, during the census in all the communities, Union Bridge needs someone that can go out and do the census report. What that consists of, if everybody would fill out the census report when it's sent in the mail, they'd be fine, but those that don't, then the state sends out a form to let us know the people that have not filled them out, then you have to take the paperwork to each one's door and have them fill it out. And what it amounts to is eighteen hundred dollars per person that this federal government loses per person by not filling out the census report. So if you have a household of three people, you know, it's thirty-six hundred dollars, and then you only do census every ten years, so if one person is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars you lose in ten years. So it's very important that we do that. I think we're the only municipality in Carroll County right now that doesn't have somebody, so if you know anybody that's a reliable source, and somebody that wants to keep the buttons lifted. I mean, because when you sign up to do this, you're signing up that any information that you see, if you go to their house and you get that form, that you have to keep it to yourself because of the twenty-five hundred dollar fine for five years in jail. And what they were saying that it probably won't be five years in jail because of confidential information. So we need somebody from our area, Union Bridge, that is willing to do this for those people who do not fill them out. So I've asked several people, they're having meetings at the county office building with that. The county says if we don't get anybody, you know, they're gonna have to probably step up to the plate and see if they can find a volunteer from another community. But anybody that wants to do it, it'd be strictly between you and the county office building. They have training there, and then hopefully people will fill out the forms when they get them in the mail and make our jobs easier, but there are, there's some people that don't want to do it, and everybody gets counted. And I don't know exactly how it's gonna be, and if you're talking about your largest cities and municipalities where they have a lot of, I guess, people that are seasonal people, everybody is counted, so every household, every person. So it's gonna be a pretty big job if anybody wants to take that on. So we're hoping we get somebody. They have classes on social media and the laws, and that was, did you attend that, Ellen? I think the summer conference is something that everybody should try to attend because what people put on social media as far as Facebook, Twitter, all this kind of stuff, they know what's on there. So make sure that you put something on there that's right because it could come back as a public information thing if you tell somebody something or you put it on social media. We see it every day, talk about the fake news. Let's hope that we don't have it around here because it's so much crap out there and everything is being watched and it can be kept. So if you put something on there, that's a talent in Union Bridge, make sure it's okay and it's right because if it's not, and somebody comes and says, well, you know, it was on Facebook or it was on Twitter, it was on whatever, it could come back to haunt us and if it's not the right people telling it. That's the reason why we're trying to inform everybody that each council should have a public information person, which I've already taken class, I'm certified, but, you know, that person should be the one that's gonna talk to me and everything to make sure to come back, it's gonna be that guy's, guy's gonna get in trouble, guy or girl's gonna get in trouble because they hate wrong information. We've got notes for our Carroll County Legislative Dinner, which will be December 12th. That's a Tony Town American Legion, that's the once a year when we have all the municipalities together and we go over the legislative package that the Maryland Municipal League wants to take before the delegation, and that will be that day. The past month, I have been talking to Brian Levine, which a lot of people may not remember, but that's the gentleman that was in town last spring making the movie in town. It's during its debut in New York, I think it's next week. And he's been sending me little clips, you know, here and there about the movie. I've got it on my phone, it's on a Google or something, so I'll give that to you guys down here in case you want to look at it. So far, it looks pretty good. It's a horror movie, it's called Union Bridge. Got some really good clips from down by the creek here, down by the sewer plant where they were at, some different farm fields, and it's about this guy came back, actually he's gone for a long time, and he's digging up some treasures and everything, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty good. It's a little bit like the Blair Witch thing that was up in Burkittsville, but I think, as far as I'm concerned, what I've seen so far, it's a little bit better than Blair Witch, so I'm kinda excited. Been going back and forth with Brian, and I thought they forgot all about us because we hadn't heard anything, and the last two months has really gotten, and I'm getting almost every day this thing, another little clip of what this movie's about, so it's pretty nice, it's gonna be pretty interesting. That is all that I have right now, and we'll do the John.
Well, I'm here to talk about the documents that have been circulated relating to Public Service Commission case number 9483. Just a quick recap of where we are. The administrative law judge in this case that was scheduled originally to have an entry hearing back in August, agreed to suspend the proceedings to give the parties a chance to work out a settlement agreement. That was based on some of the preliminary discussions we've had with the applicant. And so that's been, the case has really been suspended since then. The suspension was extended once, and on Friday of this week, the applicant goes up date to the judge as to how the negotiations are going. In the meantime, the applicant's attorney sent me this joint motion for approval, which I'm sent to all of you. And I will say that I kinda took the approach that rather than giving counsel every version of every rewrite and redraft and counter draft, that I made the point with the applicant's attorney that let me get this to the point where I think the council can be comfortable with it, let's get some of the details straightened out, and let's get it to the point where I feel like we're close to final. And so where we are with these documents, and I'm trying to make this clear in my emails to you, is that I'm in a position, knowing what I know and what we've discussed over eighteen months that this has been going on, that I'm prepared to recommend it to the town. However, I've made it equally clear to the attorneys or citizens that it's obviously your call and that this isn't in draft form at this point, and that now presented, we've gotten some of the kinks out, but if you've got any hesitations or questions, that's why we're, that's why we're here. So they give me the original versions that went back and forth of this joint motion, and the reason it's in the form of a motion is that this all has to be approved by the administrative law judge and ultimately the Public Service Commission, which we expect it would be approved, but it's a formality, but it's really up to the Public Service Commission to kind of rubber stamp the agreement. And so with the joint motion is the actual agreement, and the agreement came to be without the pilot, which is the payment of the tax agreement, and without the annexation agreement. So I insisted that we have an annexation agreement, and the thinking is that when we annex other properties, we've made it clear that the town can't just automatically supply public water and sewer and that sort of thing. Now, you may say, well, they don't need public water and sewer, that's true, but once they come into town, we can't control what they do over the course of time. So we have the same or similar language in this annexation agreement that they've now agreed to, that we have in the one from Jackson Ridge and from the villages, that makes it clear that if they need water, if they need sewer, they need to come to the town and be responsible for costs and planning and those types of things. So there is some other language in the annexation agreement. It kind of mirrors what you see in the settlement agreement, but the main purpose was not to try to predict all the things that might happen, but just get the big picture so that they would acknowledge that the town would not be responsible if there was a need for public water and sewer. And they understand that and have agreed to that. The pilot agreement, again, I think we wanted that because it could have been negotiated down the road, but it just seemed to be better to let's get all this straightened out, there's not gonna be that, there shouldn't be anything left to negotiate as far as the tax payments. The, I think that Dawn distributed to you the tax revenue chart again. That originally was a five percent depreciation number, and it went to three point three three percent. So you should be looking at one that shows a three point three percent. And those are the numbers, that hasn't changed. I think we probably got that three to four to six weeks ago, but that is the final version, that hasn't changed. So those numbers are attached to the pilot. And what those numbers are, so I'll let you get the rate. The first four years will be twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars to the town. The next four years, twenty-one, one twenty-five, the next four years, seventeen thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars, and so on. And we understand that this is based on what the applicant has represented as a good fake estimate of the cost of the equipment based on equipment that they bought on other projects. But that this model will be used in terms of the percentages, but the actual number will be based on the actual cost of the equipment. So the six and a half million dollars that you see there will be adjusted up or down depending on what the cost of the equipment is ultimately. So that's the way that works. Exhibit, the appendix B to the agreement is the same drawing that we circulated within the past four to six weeks that shows the panels, not only on the outside of the town limits, but in the IR district, inside looks down, inside the town. So we've added back and agreed to add back some panels there, and that hasn't changed. That will be attached to the final. I've got a copy of that if anybody needs to see that. Ned sent us back a comment about the decommissioning bond, and actually Ned's in New Jersey right now, but he, we patched him in on a call with the PPRP and their attorney today and talked for about a half an hour because there are numerous conditions that are not in these documents, but they're incorporated from the PPRP report that's at the Luminous Report that we got so many months ago. And one of the conditions in that report is that a shorty for decommissioning the project would have to be posted. Even after we spoke, it's a little unclear as to who holds that bond, but I think in the end it's probably gonna be the town. It might be the Public Service Commission, and they didn't know for sure. Apparently this stuff is evolving and they're doing it different ways on different projects on a case-by-case basis, but there will be, it is a condition. It was in there from the start and it will remain in there. And all the other conditions that you saw in terms of landscaping and meeting, you know, site plan review and that sort of thing, although they're not in here, they're part of the Public Service Commission approval, and so they stay, they will stay. There may be some tweaking of the language because now the project is all in town, whereas before it said county in certain places. But again, that's, that's not a major concern for us because the county does most of the review, the technical review on the site plan anyway for the town, so I don't think that changes much in terms of the review process. Last week, Dawn made an effort to get the status report out to the public as best we could. Obviously, we've been in private closed session for a lot of this because of the nature of the negotiations, and we weren't able to report as we went along to the public, but we want the public to understand what the agreement is about, so we've got some of that information out in the status report. We can discuss it more here as you, as you wish. We are at a point where we're ready to answer questions, discuss it, approve it. Again, no promises were made to citizens that there would be a final approval tonight if we need more time, but that's fine. I haven't gotten much back in the way of feedback, and little things I did get, we incorporated into the documents as we went along. And, you know, a lot of this stuff we've talked about, you know, over again, you know, over the months, so it wasn't, it was just getting it into the paperwork. So that, I think, is my best summary of where we are. For the benefit of the public, I mean, the main point here is that the whole project is gonna be annexed into town, so all the panels, the regulatory requirements, they'll all be town, and then the taxes will come to the town, also to the county, because the county gets personal property taxes as well. And the real property taxes also will go county and town, and the town will get the benefit of that.
I think the document's still, the document looks pretty good. I mean, it's been a piece of work for the best eighteen months, but I think it's covered pretty good, and it's also protecting the town, I think, as best that we can do for now. And of course, we've had a chance to put over it the past week or so, and I'd say a lot of it wasn't made to be public until we, I think, you know, dragged away, it's, what's the council wishes? Do you need more time on it, or I think the document looks pretty good. We've been, or I'm telling you, we want, but as council, we have to make that decision if anyone votes on it tonight.
So we make a motion on this before it goes to Public Service Commission?
To a great wish.
You're gonna motion to approve the documentation and authorize the mayor to sign it, and then I'll pass that along to the citizen's attorney. He'll report it to the judge, and then the judge will decide whether they wanna have a hearing or just accept it, or how it gets submitted, I don't know. That'll be up to...
I'm just trying to follow up. I make a motion that we have Perry, the mayor Perry, sign the joint motion for approval of agreements stipulation and settlement for case number 9483.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions? Hearing on all those, pay your eyes.
Aye.
No.
Okay, I'll pass that along with a speed to post it as to what happens next in the process. That's all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I haven't done enough time, so...
Between the dates of September 23rd until December 27th, Carroll County Sheriff's Department responded to fifty-five calls for service within the town elements of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, only three retired report, which were the following. On September 27th, at approximately 3:46 PM, deputies volunteered team patrol observed a traffic violation in the 100 block of North South Main Street. After they stopped, the North Main Street and Green Valley Road, found contact with driver. It was learned that the driver was currently, or the driver currently had a arrest warrant out of Pennsylvania, making him a fugitive from justice. Subject was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll County Detention Center. Without incident and charges, and charged accordingly, case was closed by arrest. On October 4th, at approximately 6:41 PM, deputies responded to the unit block of East Albert Street in reference to a mental health emergency. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the victim was severely depressed and stated that they were going to go by door, shoot up, and kill themselves. Victim was taken into custody and transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for further treatment. Case was closed. On October 25th, at approximately 6:24 in the morning, deputies responded to the unit block of North Main Street in reference to a suspicious condition. Upon arrival, it was discovered that an unknown suspect had climbed over a locked fence and was able to enter the patio area of the building. Suspect was later, or was further able to gain entry to the building by an unsecured window. It was later learned that the suspect had stolen a chocolate pie before fleeing the area. Suspect was later located, arrested, and transported to the Carroll County Detention Center without incident. Case was closed by arrest. Other notes, trick or treat will be held on Thursday, October 31st, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Motor is traveling in the area, should be with caution that night as the streets will be full of candy-hungry kids.
And parents.
And parents, yep. So October 1st was the end of the fourth quarter, so for our third quarter of the year. So as of right now, calls for service within the town is five hundred and eight as of October 1st. Police events, we've received fifty reports since the beginning of the year. For the third quarter, on how we stand, we're actually up by three in 2000, or I'm sorry, down by three. Uh, no, correction, up by three in 2017 and down by seventeen from last year. As you can see, there's a nice little graph for you. As of the calls for service within the first three quarters, we're down by thirty-six from 2017 and down from nine from 18. Event-wise, we are two down from seventeen and seven down from last year as a report-wise for the third quarter. For year-wise, we're down by six in seventeen, up by three from last year this time. So the other thing that I have for you is the overdose investigation summary report. Total cases this year for overdoses within the county is three hundred and twenty-two. Accidental overdoses is two hundred and fifty-one, out of theirs, Union Bridge had six. Other than that, that's all I have.
Just so you know, an incident had happened on October 25th. Somebody called and talked to me, and they said they were very impressed with the speed and quality of service that was provided for that.
I coordinated a lot of that while I was at the South Carroll Tech School, so we were on the phone quite a bit that morning, but I will pass it on.
They were very happy with the service that was provided.
Yep, and I will pass it on to the other defendants that responded. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments or concerns? From the center, please.
Hi, Sherry Thompson, Union Bridge, on behalf of Dreambed Union Bridge. And at our last meeting, we, they wanted me to come to the town council meeting and ask, they're very interested in purchasing some holiday banners. I was wondering if we could get permission to purchase them and put them on the light bulbs, just very generic holiday banners for like Christmas and stuff.
Yeah, that's fine, because we're, at the end of this month, we'll take down the military banners, and then we have some of the Union Bridge banners that we're gonna put in different places, and then Christmas lights go up. Another body, that is like two weeks straight for Thanksgiving.
Okay. I don't know what the turnaround timeframe is, but, you know, I said we couldn't order them until we talked to you guys to see, you know, be pointless for us to buy them if you're looking less up, but I think it'd be interesting, but...
Sure, yeah, shouldn't be a problem.
All right, and we don't really have a whole lot here on right now. We're planning our next year's strategy, so we put out a calendar, our last meeting, and what we're hoping to do is we wanna post like when all the meetings are because there's one or two times where we'll be off because of a holiday, and we want people to know when we're meeting and where so that they can attend, and any events that we have coming up. And as always, we're open to any needs or suggestions, we're willing to help, so, thank you.
Can we see what kind of banners you're going to pick?
Oh, absolutely, I'll let you see them.
Are you volunteering to do our census voice?
No. I can't keep my mouth shut.
Boy, that's a good way to get your lock that person.
I want my mouth shut.
Okay, anyone else with concerns? Okay, we're gonna be ready in the committee reports. Ellen?
Okay, first thing up is I have sixteen tickets that need to be sent to the state's attorney for no process, or no prosecution, whatever that means. I know what it means, but sixteen of them, do you need to know what they're for, or are they for seventy?
No, I don't need to know, do you think you need to go? Something we can't handle here, or certainly have to go there or something?
Correct, so you give John a copy of that, correct?
Yes, this is a reminder, this has been probably more than a couple of years since we sent them back, so we sent these to the state's attorney's office with an explanation as to why they are inappropriate to be prosecuted any further, and in the past, they've pretty much accepted our explanation. Occasionally, I'll get a call with a question on one or two of them, but it's been fairly routine. Sorry.
Well, she's put the explanation on the front, so we have that. Okay. The MML of Engagement and Outreach Committee met last week, and of course, the census was a very big part of that. We had a workshop going in, and it might be interesting to have that lady come and visit here for one of my work sessions to go over the stuff with it. It was very interesting. Banner City, Banner Town, the next stop is Municipal Government Works Month, which is November, and I'm working on something for that. We have more contenders for Banner City, Banner Town this year than I think they've ever had. I think it was either eighty-two or eighty-four, something like that. And usually after fall conference, we're down to seventy-seven. So that was really nice to know. The essay contest is at the printers, Dawn should be getting the town copy in December, and that's for here to town. The school should be getting theirs in February. If we have somebody who can go to the school next month, that would be good, get them started thinking about it.
You think there's a way to present it or just to give them?
To give them information about municipal government, and you can tell them that it's coming. You can tell them that the theme this year is reimagine tomorrow. The questions that they came up with for that, I thought were very good. I went to the fall conference with Perry. Sunday, I attended the DVP Chapter Officers Meeting because I'm the secretary for Carroll County. The group was addressed by Ryan Speedle, who is our president. And he spoke about the 2020 census, and they take off in November. And he spoke about the 2020 census and they take off in November. Paula reminded us about the reference guide for the chapters is on the website. Mike McCormick with American Fidelity spoke about Management Services, Employee Benefits, and Enrollment Solutions, which is not to be confused with benefits, actually choosing the benefits that we use. And Ken Carlson spoke about Short Scan Solutions, which is scanning in all our documentation that we have to retain, that it makes it a lot easier to find and search the records, and that they even have financing options for us. Then, Wendy went to Snap Learning Bond Bills, which was presided over by Michael Connell, who is the mayor of Frederick, Delegate Jeff Grist, and Carol Resnick. And I didn't, don't remember whether he was Senator, he was somebody, any government officials.
Senator.
Senator?
Delegate, he's delegate.
Delegate, so he was a delegate also. They discussed project eligibility, that it had be capital nature, used for life of 15 or more years, and serve with public purpose. He also discussed the many different questions they like to ask on bond Saturday, and that the project needs to be shovel-ready, employment creation retention, and for state local government. He said also to choose your sponsor wisely. And the, the bond bills, in case nobody knows, because I didn't know what they were when I went to, that's why I went to it, is where we put together a request and give it to our legislators and senators and ask them to find money that's, the money is backed by the bond, I guess is the best way to say it, to help us do capital improvements for our municipality. So, he said that, you know, if you're going to do one, give it to your legislator, or your delegate, and your senator, twice the banner. And if it's a large project, it should be sent to the governor's capital budget first by September. They said the submissions are due by Jan, mid-January. Early February, the actual filing deadline, and March is bond bill Saturday, and then April, the budget is passed. So, basically, what you're doing is you're asking the governor to provide funds, package it with a bond, for you to do your project. Of course, you have to match it, so it's not all free. I also went to the social media, the law one. There was a lot of good information there, and I'll try to disseminate it to you guys, and you can also put it out for everybody, the public's a once. Basically, the first and most important thing was that we need to have a social media policy board with town elected officials before we have any issues. That outlines how it all works. And officials need to make sure that if they have a social media account, like Facebook or Twitter or anything like that, that they clearly stayed on there, that it is their personal account, and it is not a town of Union Bridge account. And there was a couple of other things they talked about, too. Then, I went for Shaping Space for Civic Life, which was Suzie and Nigbo. That one was kind of interesting. It was all about signage and how you do certain things that, signage that is not tacky and just taking up space. Signage that brings interest, you know, gets interest from the public. It's using public space as a tool for fostering equity, enhancing community connections, and prioritizing maintenance. And I have a website for that one. I didn't put it on the paper that I gave you, but I'll try to find that and send it to you. And I think that's all I had, and I think that's enough.
I reported two lights that were out in town. I met with Kenny Kiefer. He's the one who works on the Christmas lights that go up, and he had to restring all the greenery with new lights, and I went over and visited with him, and they look great. He had to replace them with a longer strand that had more lights, and it looks very good. And he said he's probably going to have them up, actually, maybe as early as next week or week after. And he asked that I have the power turned on, so when he plugs them in, he can test them right away instead of waiting until Thanksgiving to see if they work. So, I called First Energy today. They're going to turn the lights on, or the power on to the light bulbs as early as tomorrow, but that'll be plenty of time for him. And I'm planning to serve doughnuts on the roof for American Education Week, which means I should be in the school in November. So, we can talk at work session, work session. We can talk at work session, whatever you want me to do. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. There you go.
I have a seen that from calls this month for water shit.
Great. I did forget to bring up, and you, Dawn, do you remember what day they said they were going to be Christmas tree lighting? It was, I know they had to change it because it's going, it's either the 3rd or the 4th.
I don't remember.
Anyway, it'd be December either the 3rd or the 4th, and it would be held. And I want to talk to Dawn because last year, we went to the Brother Church because the community center was being worked on, and they grow like tanning at the church, and the church was really involved last year. So, I don't, if the church wanted to do it again, because they talked like last year, they'd like to keep it as part of the kids' caroling and stuff there, which I think is great. It's kind of like, get some more of the community involved. And I'll talk to Dawn next, tomorrow, and next week, and see if they want to have it there, or whether it would go back to the community center. So, I'll check on that.
Is there a reason that we don't do it at the square anymore like we always did?
Because the principal and Ms. Teacher at the school do not want all the kids on the streets afraid they're going to get run over. And they like, with all the, all the instruments they bring now, they like it inside in case it rains, they don't have to try to redo it. I mean, they used to just come and carol with some music. Now, they bring their instruments and set up, and they really do a...
I didn't go last year, so I didn't...
Yeah, the last couple of years, they, they come in with all their instruments, and they set up, and then the parents and the grandparents all come in. Last year, the, I think the Brother Church was full upstairs, downstairs where he had it with all the parents and everybody was there, so. But that was the reason we went to the community center, because of bad weather, and then they liked it there, and of course, they really liked the church last year, so it'd either be at the Brother Church or at the community center. We'll get that worked out, was get notices around town, make sure all the parents know, because that made the teacher up there very happy.
See, I don't like it at the community center. I don't know how it is at the church, but the community center's too small.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion.
I want to, like the tree at the church, that tree was planted in memory of Jimmy Versenfeld. It is really beautiful, and...
Really? I didn't get to see that.
I don't think they're going to do that again this year.
Really? That was a really pretty question.
I think, I should call back. Okay. The other thing I have here is our next work session will be November 4th. It's a big week early because of November, the following week is Veterans Day. And our next council meeting will be November 25th, right after Thanksgiving, or before Thanksgiving, I guess, this year.
Trick or treating is?
Trick or treating, like I say, is...
Sixty?
Six thirty eight.
Six thirty.
Six thirty eight.
Only houses are planted on...
Anybody wants to participate, turn the light on. Take care of the little kiddies, and also the candy-hungry parents that will be out there.
And hopefully, our parents will do a much better job this year of making sure that their children are visible, because last year, especially on Locust Street, where there's no streetlights, you know, you came up on them, even going very slow, you came up on them before you even realized it, because it was so dark on the streets.
Everybody have to drive very carefully that night. Okay, in front of the business, we're in line for a German.
I make a motion we adjourn meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any questions? Hearing none, all of us, pay your eyes.
Aye.
No, motion's carried. Thank you for coming.